Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen. Please direct your attention to Larry Ryan for the pledging allegiance. Larry, with the way.
Yes, Michelle. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion. As are other recently recorded meetings and community events, please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. On the agenda, Doug, community announcements. Healthcare worker of the week?
Yes, thanks, Mike. I always enjoy doing this at each of our meetings. I think it's a nice tradition that you started. So I'd like to read the summary of the person that we've selected as the healthcare worker of the week. Her name is Anne Richardson. And Anne wrote that she is so honored to be chosen as Rockland's healthcare worker of the week. I earned my bachelor's of science in nursing from Salem State College in 2002, and have been employed with South Shore Hospital for 18 years. I currently work as a float nurse caring for the adult population in a range of acute care settings. My position is unique as it provides me with the opportunity to work on different units throughout the hospital to care for patients on the oncology, orthopedic, cardiac, and medical surgical units. I also helped support the COVID-19 designated units during the height of this global pandemic alongside many amazing staff across all disciplines. We stuck together as a team, learned and adapted as everything evolved, and were rallied and supported by family, friends, and local communities. The nursing profession has been so fulfilling in my life, and despite the challenges, it's a calling and a love unending. My husband and I have lived in Rockland for 15 years and are proudly raising our two Bulldogs in this wonderful community. Thank you again for this recognition. So, thought that was really wonderful. I don't know, Mike, do you want to talk about the police and fire recognitions?
Yeah, sure, that'd be great. So this was brought to me a little while back about recognizing our first responders in the community, in the community, and honestly, you know, I think it's a, it's a great idea. You know, there's so much happening in the rest of the country, and I appreciate the fact that we have, you know, very well-trained and very professional police and fire department. So, you know, I spoke to a couple of the other members of the board, and we thought it might be appropriate to do a twofold. We'll do a Rockland Police Appreciation Day for Saturday, September 5th, and we'll do a Rockland Fire Appreciation Day for Saturday, October 3rd, which actually ties in very nicely to the very beginning of Fire Prevention Week. You know, it's just an opportunity for the community to come out and, and thank, thank these two departments for, for the hard work that they do in protecting the community and sacrificing day in and day out. I'll open that up to the rest of the board. I think it should be a yearly thing, you know, where we, we try to take that opportunity and keep it on these, maybe not these dates specifically, but, you know, the first Saturday of September and the first Saturday of October, respectively. So, I'll open it up to the other members of the board. Mr. Ryan?
I think it's a great idea. We do have a really good police department and a stellar fire department also with an ambulance crew that takes care of an awful lot of people within the town of Rockland. And we should recognize them on a routine basis. And, you know, people will say they're doing their job, you know, and, and they are doing their job, and they're doing it well. And when people do their job well, we should recognize them and, and say to them, "Thank you for doing your job well," because anybody can do the job, but when you do it well consistently, it goes all the way from the top to the bottom. And I just want to thank both chiefs for doing it for the town of Rockland, and thank them both.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, no, I agree. Like, we are like very, very fortunate in Rockland to, you know, to have our public safety departments, like, oh, you know, who they are, like, and the training and the professionalism, and the education, the expertise, oh, you know, that Rockland Fire and Police are known for, you know, and I think anything we can do to honor them. I mean, when you look at what, at what's happening across the country, like, and obviously everyone, you know, like, when we hear these issues, we assess where we are, who we have, like, and where we are in this whole environment. Like, we, like, and we, like, and we have men and women, like, in the police and fire department, who consistently, they go above and beyond, like, they're departments who we can have faith in, who we trust, like, who are residents, like, have no problem trusting, you know, the men and women of the departments are, oh, you know, they're part of our town, they're part of our community, like, they're our neighbors, they're our family members, like, and I think anything we can do to honor them, you know, and to thank them, and to thank them for the sacrifices that they're making on the, like, millions on the front lines protecting all of us on a 24/7 basis, like, anything we can thank them for that. Like, frankly, he's right, like, it's a responsible thing to do, and I wouldn't have it any other way, Mr. Tim, and so I wholeheartedly agree.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Penny?
So, I think over the last year, we've, on, there have been many more Board of Selectmen meetings where we have acknowledged the job of, of both the fire and the police department because of the outstanding work that they've done. And I just think that it's appropriate to, to do this in a, in a formal setting versus almost every meeting, talking about something that they've done to save a life, save a house, you know, whatever it is. I also think in, in this new world, a small percentage can kind of skew what's actually happening out there. And for the majority of, of our fire and police, every day, they have put themselves in the thick of things in the middle of COVID. Those are two professions that haven't taken a day off. They haven't complained about the dangers that they're put in. They just go about doing their job. And, and for that, I, I think it's well overdue to officially recognize them.
Awesome. So, you know, I, I think to that point, I think anytime, anytime you can, you have an opportunity to show appreciation, you should take that opportunity and show it. It just encourages, you know, increases morale and creates for a better, you know, a better sense of, of community. And I think, you know, so often in, in current times, people look to, you know, professional athletes as heroes, and, you know, we got some, some great people that work for us in this town, that put on the uniform every day, and that are certainly the heroes to the members of this community. I think taking an opportunity to recognize them yearly, you know, is definitely a step in the right direction. So with that said, I will entertain a motion for an official proclamation that the first Saturday in September, be Rockland Police Appreciation Day annually, and the first Saturday in October, be Rockland Fire Appreciation Day annually.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second. I would like Mr. Muller's second, if he has, he has family there too, you know?
All right, I got, I got a motion and I got two seconds. All those in favor, Mr. Ryan?
Absolutely. Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Uh, yes.
And Mr. Mullen?
Yes, yes, yes.
And myself. So that's unanimous, okay? Doug, if you could just share that tomorrow, start, start putting that out there, just so the community can, can show their appreciation to those departments, especially the police being that, that's just this Saturday coming, so.
Yep, will do.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, zoning board of appeals, leaving vacancies. Doug?
Sure. So the board has asked that we extensively publicize and advertise the vacancies on this board. It's a very important board. As we all know, there's one permanent vacancy and two alternates. As of right now, we actually do now have three, three applications that we've received. And Mike, I think the last time you and I spoke, I think we were thinking about waiting until the first meeting in October, which would be October 6th, where you might even want to have the candidates participate in the Zoom meeting. Maybe you guys want to ask them a few questions, and then you can maybe check in with the chairman of the ZBA and then make a decision at some point after that. I just want to highlight to the public that it's a really important board. What we put on the agenda, for those that don't know, is that it's responsible for holding public hearings, for special permits, variances, and appeals relating to land use. And there's a form on the town website under forms and applications that you can print and send in the town hall if you want to throw your name, throw your hat in the ring. I don't know if you want to add on to that, Mike?
Yeah, so I think, I think maybe the, the direction that we want to go with this is, you know, I might ask the other members of, of my board to maybe put together some questions and have them ready. We can kind of review those questions, just make sure, and we'll interview, we'll set up interviews with each of the candidates for those positions for the October 6th meeting. So we have the questions, the questions are all uniformed and approved by, by all of us. Each candidate will be asked the same, same questions. And then, you know, I think October 6th, we interview them and we wait till our next meeting in October to make the appointment, but that will give us an opportunity to touch base with Chairman Rosa, to see what his thoughts are, and talk to some of the other members of the zoning board. You know, I think I said this to Doug a little while back, that, that, you know, I would hate to have somebody appoint somebody to my board without, our board without, you know, talking to us first. Obviously, we don't have that luxury. We got, you know, 18,000 people that, that appoint people to our board every, every few years when it comes up. But, you know, in this tradition, you know, I think we owe the zoning board, the chairman and the other members, the respect to touch base with them and find out what, what they want for their board after they, they take part in, at least have an opportunity to view the interview process of those, those three candidates. Mr. Rosa, anything to add?
No, I appreciate you, I appreciate your words on that. We haven't had, we haven't had anybody come to us like that before. So I definitely, I definitely appreciate that. We've never had anybody kind of talk to us about, you know, a new member, or, you know, "What do you think about this guy? What do you think about that guy?" I, I absolutely appreciate that, Mike. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, so that'll be the time. So we'll do it that way. So September 15th, if you guys could just submit your questions to Doug by September 15th, Doug can kind of put something together, and then we'll just pick it off of, off of the list of what questions we want to ask on the October 6th meeting. We'll invite the three candidates to the October 6th meeting. We can interview them, just like we did with the town administrator search. All the questions, the same questions are asked to all three candidates. And, and we'll go from there. And then from October 6th until, what's our next meeting, October, what, 18th?
Twenty, yes, yep.
October 20th. Yeah, we will sit back and we'll touch base with, touch base with the zoning board and Chairman Rosa and get their input on it, and then we'll make the appointment on that date. Okay? All right, Doug, next. Board of, Board of Library Trustees?
Sure, yep. So the last community announcement is there are two vacancies on our Board of Library Trustees. So we'll handle this one a little bit differently. Letters of interest should be sent directly to the library, so the Board of Trustees, attention, Pat Foley, by October 13th. So that's sort of an interesting one, where boards of library trustees have a lot of power under state law, and they, and our charter references the state law. So they do have interesting authority over the library in certain respects. And so we'd encourage anybody that believes in that mission to throw their hat in the ring and send a letter into Pat Foley by October 13th. That's all I have for announcements.
Okay, excellent. Next on the agenda, opening session minutes of August 4th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself, that's unanimous. Next on the agenda, new business. Cresco Yadza request, Town Hall Plaza, Saturday, September 12th, noon to 5:00 p.m. Doug?
Yep. So, you know, this is a good practice, I think, for all groups, whether it's something as, you know, wholesome as the Boy Scouts, or, you know, any group, if they were Cub Scouts, I should say. Any group that wants to use town property should ask the town for, for permission. And I think, you know, what they're looking to do, host a recruitment event, you know, have it outside, people can socially distance, you know, they'll know how to be safe. Think it's a great thing. I just appreciate the fact that they're asking for it. So I'd certainly recommend it.
So entertain a motion to allow Boy Scouts to use Town Hall Plaza on Saturday, September 12th, noon to 5:00.
So moved?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I got a second.
All those in favor, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself. Okay. Next on the agenda, ratify acceptance of deed for Hartz IV Park parcel approved, 22, town meeting. Doug?
Yep. So I'd like to share my screen quickly. I hope this will work. Can you all see the map on your computers?
Yep.
Great. So, you know, I know you all know this already, so a little bit of this is for the public, but one of the things I was most excited about at our town meeting that we held in June was, we got town meeting support to use Community Preservation Act funds to buy this 7.38 acre parcel of land that's highlighted in red that directly above Hartz IV Park, and it's going to, you know, dramatically improve the acreage that we have. So, the purpose of the vote that I'm hoping you will take tonight is to formally ratify your acceptance of the deed, which we did, you did already sign just recently because we had to meet the date for the closing. But it's appropriate to take a formal vote in a public meeting that you vote to accept the deed for this parcel as highlighted in red. And it again is parcel number 30-082. So just looking for a motion to accept it.
I'll make that motion to accept the parcel.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself, that's unanimous.
This could go a long way, Doug, increasing the size of Hartz IV Park. And I, I look at the map and I see other areas that are adjacent to it that are built on also that maybe over the course of time the town can acquire and, and make it quite the spot that we wanted to.
Yep. I, I know the parks commissioners have a lot of ideas for appropriate kinds of passive recreation that can happen on there. And one other note I should make is, at our next annual town meeting, not for this, not for a special, but the next annual in May, we should have an article to, to formally restrict the land for, you know, open space, open space purposes, conservation purposes. So that's something we'll have a lot of time to talk about. But especially when you use Community Preservation Act funds, it's appropriate to put a, put a restriction on it. So that's just a heads up for a future town meeting article.
Very good.
All right. Next on the agenda, common victory license for Wendy's, 1149 Hingham Street. Guys, we have on, on a Zoom meeting tonight, Bob Myers from Wendy's. So I know Bob, if you want, if you want to say a few words beforehand, or just introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'm Bob Myers, everybody on the call here. I can't view everybody, so I apologize. But I'm the Director of Operations for Wendy's. We're very excited about building the new restaurant. But let me say first, though, this is probably the first Zoom meeting I've done for a town meeting. And I will tell you, I was very impressed with the police, fire, and healthcare recognition. It's, it's kind of very refreshing these days to hear that type of stuff. So I wanted to just say thank you for that. And it's, it's a positive sentiment these days, and it was nice to hear. That said, like I said, very excited about opening the restaurant. We plan on opening, I believe, in about a couple months now. Construction obviously is underway. I'm in charge of Massachusetts and Rhode Island restaurants. We currently have 55 restaurants in the area. And, you know, again, very excited to be part of the Rockland town.
Any members from the board have any questions for, for Mr. Myers? Any comments?
I'd like to just thank him for choosing Rockland and, and bringing the Wendy's to Rockland to, not only to provide the menu for the people of the town of Rockland, but to attract business to our town so that we don't get stagnant, we become, we're getting better every day, we're getting bigger every day, not in area-wise, but in stature around our neighbors. And Wendy's is a good addition, I think, to the town, and it's located in a relatively good spot once it all gets set up and everything.
Okay. So if there was any comments, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the common victory license.
I'll make a motion.
A second. Chairman?
A second. All those in favor, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself. Bob, welcome to Rockland.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate everybody. It's a long time coming. We've been planning this for many years.
Yeah, we've heard about it for a long time. Glad to give you guys the license. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, marijuana dispensary host community agreement, Cresco Labs, 1015 Hingham Street.
I could do a little intro, Mike, that's okay. And I know Attorney Galvin was possibly going to be on the meeting. I know he had a number of other things going on tonight, so he.
I'm here.
Oh, there he is. All right. Great. The way my view is, I'm sorry, I couldn't see everybody. But just, but just generally, I do want to say that, you know, in talking with Bob and looking at the way we're doing things here, I think we have a really efficient process. And I think, you know, we're protecting the town's interests, but we're also making it, I think, as easy as we possible, possibly can for, you know, good dispensaries to want to come to Rockland. We have a pretty good process. And I can kind of confidently say that, because with some of the firms that I've been speaking with, you know, they're, they appreciate kind of how we handle things. So the, the way it works, as you know, we already have one that's up and running in town, Cannavanna. They're open for business. There's a couple others that already have their local permits and are under construction. But we frequently get asked by other companies that would like to, like to open up. And what we always start with is Bob and I meet with them either in person or nowadays by Zoom, and, and we share with them our standard template for a host community agreement, because that's really, you know, the starting point. Because if we can't reach agreement on that, there's really no point in going any further. So we go over the, you know, the host community agreement template, you know, then assuming we reach an agreement, we present it to you, you know, the board, once you guys are comfortable with it, then they're off and running. They need to get their local permits through the zoning board of appeals and site plan review through the planning board, and ultimately their, their state permits through the Cannabis Control Commission. So this particular one is sort of interesting, because the company that's before us, and I think we have a number of the representatives that are on the Zoom call, are from a company that's taken over another firm that we, that the town of Rockland previously had an agreement with, that was Hope Heal Health, HHH. So this firm that's with us now is sort of subsuming, subsuming them, they can explain it. But we, we started over with a new host community agreement discussion. And I have to say, it went really well. There were really no substantive issues or concerns, you know, based on our template. And, and again, just to highlight the big picture, because, you know, there were issues in other parts of the state, and even, you know, the FBI has been doing investigations to make sure cities and towns are shaking down these operations. And we obviously never have done anything like that and don't do that now. You know, we put our template out there, and anything voluntarily that firms want to contribute is certainly welcome, but, you know, we don't require anybody to do things like that. The standard language that's been in our, that you have in your packet and has been in our template for a while includes annual payments of 3%, and it has both a minimum and a maximum, a minimum of $100,000 a year, a maximum of $500,000 per year. In the first year of operation, when they first open, they're, have to make an initial payment of $25,000. That's part of that 3% that first year. And then there's probably one of the other significant things are donations to local food pantry, local sports, youth activities, veterans organizations, things like that. Bob can certainly answer a lot more of the technical, technical issues. But again, kind of, you know, we're not here to really get into conditions that are going to come before the zoning board or site plan issues, which will need to go for the planning board. This is really kind of big picture, you know, are you looking to have another facility in town? The, the site they're looking at is 1015 Hingham Street, which kind of across the street from, from Commerce. Maybe with that, I'll, I'll stop topping, stop talking, see if maybe Bob wants to add anything before you want to hear from the, from the applicant.
Good evening, everybody. I would probably say Doug did a super job explaining the, the nuts and bolts of our boilerplate agreement. It's an agreement that we think best suits the needs of the town, which was to encourage this type of use in, in the town, and treats applicants fairly. And we have not ever had any complaints about the language of our boilerplate agreements, either from, from any outside source. They're just very fair and reasonable, and they're consistent with the state regulations and guidance that we've got. So Cresco was very easy to work with. We had a really productive meeting a few weeks back, explained to them the process for getting an approval from the town. And we've continued to answer their questions so that we're ready for them when they're ready to apply. So I think we finalized this very fair agreement, and we're expecting them any day now to be filing with the zoning board for the special permit for the use. The zoning board in the last couple of months has already approved two other facilities. We've almost developed a list of standard conditions. This particular applicant is going into a building where they've recently obtained site plan approval, but not for this use. So this applicant has also agreed to come back to the planning board for review of this particular use, if and when the zoning board grants them a special permit for the use. So I have nothing but good things to say about this applicant. They've got a really good team with many different consultants involved, and I found them easy to work with and full of answers to any question that we've had.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Bob. You know, a couple things first. I invited some of the members of the planning board to join us here tonight. They had, they had some concerns. They took a vote on, I believe, August 25th, a floor vote to approve the, the parcel. But I think they felt as though the, whoever presented wasn't completely transparent at the time. And, and I'm not sure, I'm hoping it wasn't a, a deliberate thing. And I'd just like to give the planning board an opportunity to kind of speak on this, because at, at no point, when they asked the question, what the use is intended for was, was marijuana suggested or recognized, even though the very next day it ended up on our agenda for a host community agreement. Now, that's not saying that, that anybody here is particularly against it. I think we just need to make sure that going forward, that everybody's completely, the applicants are completely transparent with the town, we're willing to work with you guys, as long as you guys are working with us in, in a fair manner, that we have all the information. Mr. Galvin?
Yeah, I, I, I heard this a, a day or so ago from Doug, that there was some concern about a lack of transparency. And I want you to know that I immediately called their attorney, Jim Boland. Within 15 minutes, a conference call with everybody that's involved with Cresco was set up via Zoom. And they were right up front with us, and it gave me a very logical explanation. Apparently, the landlord here, which is distinct from this tenant, okay, tenant, Cresco being the tenant, was concerned because they hadn't reached a final agreement with Cresco, and intended on making building improvements for a general retail use and/or a bank. So the landlord was in, in front of the planning board in July and August, and may have made some statements that caused some confusion with the planning board, which now has become aware that the ultimate user now is Cresco Labs. Cresco didn't have any involvement in that particular use. Cresco made it very clear to me that they intended coming back to the planning board for a they intended coming back to the planning board for a brand new site plan approval associated with their use, provided the zoning board gives them the special permit use. This is something they understood back in early August, when we went through all the process with them. So I think there was some hard feelings created, because the owner of the property, who intended to renovate this, one way or the other, whether this use ultimately ended up there or not, was really just going in for a general retail approval. Cresco, I'm satisfied Cresco didn't have any involvement in that. And it's unfortunate that it came out, but I think it was just a miscommunication.
Thank you, Attorney Galvin. Chairman Corbett, are you guys comfortable? Obviously, obviously, you guys will have other conversations with that landlord at some point. And you guys will have an opportunity to have Cresco Labs down to talk to you guys as well.
Yeah, I'm not speaking for the board, or anybody on the planning board, or anybody on the zoning board. I'm speaking for myself as chairman. Just the way the whole thing went down with Radar Properties, we, he was asked multiple times if he had a potential client, so we could verify everything for parking requirements and everything that you would have going in there. And he said he had no potential clients. You know what I mean? And then, lo and behold, the next day, it appears that he has a client, because it pops on on the agenda for the selectmen's meeting. So apparently, something was in the works. I know we can't reveal a client, but he could have been honest with us. He has a traffic study that he proposed to us when we had the building done. Is a traffic study for a marijuana facility, or is it for regular retail? So it feels like we got lied to for this whole application, and we're left in the dark, because how soon before does he have to get information into a selectmen's meeting to have it posted onto the agenda? You know what I mean? So it seems like we were left in the dark. And trying to be good for the town, get business in here, you know what I mean? Because the properties, you know, just sitting there, it'd be nice to have a nice business in there for the town. But is this the type of landlord we want? It's nothing against the client. But when the applicant that is going to potentially own the land is lying to you in multiple meetings, you know what I mean? I'm not happy with it.
So, so Mike, I think, I think maybe we go, we go this direction. Maybe we have Attorney Galvin reach out to Radar Property representative that spoke with you guys, and ask that he come back in and kind of just, you know, clarify what he can clarify with you guys. I don't want to hold these guys up here tonight. I think, you know, the HCA agreement is a standard operating procedure for anybody that's looking to come to the community. We've done this in the past. And I think we continue to go forward, but I think we definitely push the landlord back to you guys, to at least improve that relationship and increase that transparency, so that you guys have some sense of trust of that applicant going forward.
Yeah, it's not against the applicant.
Yep.
Yeah, they should be aware of the owner of the property. You know what I mean? They're just renting the building. But if these are the people that they're going to have to deal with, that have lied just to get the building built and approved, that's going to be your landlord.
Yeah, Bob, if you can, if you could reach back out to whoever was representing Radar Properties, and maybe be liaison between them and the planning board.
I'd be happy to. I mean, I certainly could construct a letter on behalf of the town, and specifically the planning board, telling them how disappointed the board was to know that this was that much closer, because I don't think the board would have held it against them. The board might at worst have said, hey, look, why don't you hold off until you know what the use is, and then come in soon, or you have to do it once. And, you know, I look at it, in this day and age, probably every commercial landlord is begging to sign up somebody. So I can, I can certainly understand it. But, you know, Mr. Radar and Radar Properties either owns or brokers, probably a half a dozen properties in Rockland at any one time. So, you know, he's a significant person, and I would want him to be in good standing with all of our boards at any time. And I'll certainly convey the sentiment of the planning board to Mr. Radar tomorrow.
Thanks, Bob. So without, without further ado, Chairman Corbett, you okay with that? And we'll take the next step going forward?
I'm okay with that. But as I said, I'm only speaking for myself on the board. I am not speaking for anybody else. So you might want to do a poll with it, you know? I know Mr. Lucas is here, you know, Rob Rose is there, because he's already been to zoning to get variances on the building.
Okay, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I pretty much agree with Chairman Corbett's comments. One thing I might mention is that the landlord did ask the board to make a conditional approval, considering they had not gotten certain items completed. So we tried to be business friendly. We went ahead and approved the site plan with certain conditions, which personally, I feel they should have been able to take care of, but not doing it. We don't want to hold up a business. I have no problem with Cresco Labs. I think it's basically the landlord. And I think Attorney Galvin can put together a letter stating that. Personally, I'd be very appreciative of it.
Okay. Mr. Rosa, and then I'll start with Cresco Labs, hear from them.
I echo everything Mr. Corbett said. I just, I read the minutes. I saw what was going on. I kind of felt, didn't feel good about it. But Attorney Galvin, correct me if I'm wrong, the applicant is going to have to be Cresco Labs for the special permit, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay, so all of this is going to change once Cresco comes in and puts their name on the docket. Mr. Radar is kind of going to be out. He's just going to be collecting collecting the monthly rent. So board members, you know, I think that anybody that was suddenly felt slighted by this, my gut feeling is maybe we put this behind and say, I don't know, it happens. And talk to, when it comes time, Cresco Labs comes in, and we start from scratch. I mean, we literally have to start from scratch, because it's a whole new ballgame, whole new applicant. Again, I just, like I said, I read the planning board's minutes, draft minutes, and I kind of felt slight. If I was on the planning board, I would have felt slighted as well. So, yeah, I just say, at this point, put it behind us, and let's start fresh with a new applicant.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, so I'll go to Cresco Labs now. I don't know which one of you guys would like to speak first. I think, Jim, you have Cresco in your name, so why don't you sweep things off?
Actually, gentlemen, thank you, first of all, for having us. I'm actually going to let a member of our government affairs team, Christian Fikara, who has a
Thanks, Jim. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We prepared a small presentation for the board. Would it be okay if I shared my screen?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Great. Let me do that real quickly. Can y'all see that?
Yep.
Okay, great. So first, I want to start out, and I want to thank Doug and Bob. They've been incredibly helpful throughout this process. And I want to wish everybody a good evening. Members of the board, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. My name is Christian Fikara. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs for Cresco Labs. And I'm joined virtually by my colleague and senior counsel, Jim Boland, and our local zoning attorney, Phil Silverman. And I want to just thank you first for allowing us the opportunity to introduce ourselves and our company to the board. I think we're all really excited at the prospect of coming to Rockland and expanding our footprint in Massachusetts. But more importantly, I think we're really excited to serve Rockland residents and provide a benefit and a service to the community. So without ado, I've prepared a very small agenda, because I know you have other business to discuss tonight, so I want to be respectful of your time. That said, I just want to start off by talking a little bit about our company. And then I'd like to transition into our plans for the proposed site, where I'll highlight not only aspects of the property, but also details about our security and our operational protocols. And then finally, we'll elaborate on several of our community efforts and economic benefits that we can bring to Rockland. So let me kick it off by telling you a little bit about Cresco, and who we are. We currently operate in 19 retail dispensaries in the United States. And that includes Fall River, Massachusetts. And we hold 30 additional licenses across the country for retail dispensaries. But aside from Fall River, we have a strong presence in the Northeast, including in Brooklyn, Long Island, Pittsburgh, Philadelphia. Nationally, we employ over 1,500 people. And I'm proud to say that over 400 of those employees are within Massachusetts, New York, and Pennsylvania. And this is just a slide showing our national footprint in the states we're located in where we do business. So I included this slide for the board to consider, and I say this with a hint of bias. But one of the things that I think really sets Cresco apart from other companies in the industry is our professional and regulatory experience. Many of our employees come from some of the world's most recognizable and successful companies, including Ford, Johnson &amp; Johnson. Mikey, you see the brands up there. But we also have employees with extensive experience in government and planning, which I think is hugely important, because we can assure our neighbors and communities that everything we do is in compliance with local and state regulation. And to be fair, I think that's another way of saying, while the very nascent industry, we're not learning it on the fly. We know everything that needs to be done, and the steps that need to be taken in order to run a safe and successful facility, which leads me to my next slide, which is our national brand, which is known as Sunnyside. And Sunnyside represents a new kind of dispensary in our eyes. As you'll see in the future slides that I'll get to in a moment, our trademark stores are bright, they're welcoming, they're convenient. And we like to think of our stores as a hub for health and wellness for both new and existing customers that could be served in the Rockland community. So this is the proposed site. I'm sure all of you are familiar with it, at 1015 Hingham Street, just on the northeast corner of Commerce and Hingham. Our proposed building on the site would be just over 5,000 square feet, and would include adequate onsite parking, as well as some offsite parking as well. I know traffic's a big issue here. So we've completed a traffic study, a traffic impact study already. And we would be happy to share that with you if needed. I want to transition really quickly to the concept of site transformation. One thing that I think is important for us to highlight is when we develop or renovate a property, we do so in a really collaborative spirit with local community. And we try to ensure that our facilities meet the standards of the communities we're in, but are also a complement to the character of the neighborhoods where we're located. So as you'll see in this slide, this is just one example. We transformed this property in Danville, Illinois, in approximately 10 weeks. And it was an absolutely fantastic project, earned the praise of neighbors and local businesses. It brought a fresh, vibrant atmosphere to the commercial corridor that I think everybody agreed sorely needed it. And we just threw in some other photos for you, just to get you a feel of what our brand looks like, and what you can expect out of our stores. This is an exterior photo of our location in Schaumburg. This is an internal photograph at the same location, as you can see, spacious, bright, comfortable for customers. And finally, one more of our service area. And I want to, I want to note, these are real photographs. These aren't renderings. This is the type of professionalism and warm environment you can expect in every single one of our stores across the country. In terms of our operations, I wanted to highlight a number of key policies at our location. Some of them include, but are not limited to, we don't allow unpackaged cannabis products in the store. We don't allow consumption on the premises. Our hours of operations would be 10 to 8 p.m. per the HCA agreement. And one thing I think is actually important to note is that our stores are debit card compatible for cashless transactions. And this is a big deal for us, because it's a safer way to do business, number one. But number two, it's also accommodating to customers as well for Rockland. As far as security, the safety of our customers and our employees is obviously of the utmost priority. So we have state-of-the-art technology in our stores, a robust security system to ensure our locations are extremely safe. And I'm happy to list a number of those reinforcements, a couple of them just offhand here, 24/7 online access for regulators and law enforcement, armed officers and off-duty police. Cannabis products are stored in a secure vault, and all products are tracked from the time it enters the store until the time it leaves. And on the topic of security, this is just one of the many letters we've received from our friends in law enforcement. This is one from the Chief of Police in Elmwood Park that's commending us for being a good neighbor and our responsiveness to their requests. I just wanted to share this, as I think it's indicative of the type of relationships we have when we open the location. Some of the first calls we make, as soon as we hit the ground, are to the Chiefs of Police, the Chiefs of Fire, to get acquainted, exchange contact information. And we also reach out to elected officials, local officials, and community groups as well. And speaking of community, ingraining our company and our employees in community strengthening projects is something we really enjoy doing, and we believe it's an important responsibility to give back where we can. This year, at our Fall River location, we've donated nearly $12,000 to local organizations. Our team has volunteered over 100 hours in support of local initiatives. And currently, our staff holds one in-store fundraiser or donation drive every month to benefit a local cause. So in Rockland, we've already started engaging with several groups to see how we can support them. We've already reached out to the South Shore Chamber, the Rockland Emergency Food Pantry, and Rockland Cares. We also have a list of veterans organizations on our radar as well. So we look forward to continuing those conversations and pursuing potential partnerships there. And finally, we're proud of the significant economic impact that we could bring to Rockland. The projected costs of a site buildout are well over $1 million, which means opportunities for local contractors. We also anticipate hiring 25 to 30 new local full-time employees, and that comes with good pay, good benefits. And based on our site specs and location, we're projecting over $4.5 million in sales over the first year, which equates to roughly $1.4 million in tax revenue for the state. So with that, I want to conclude and yield the floor back. And thank you for your time, and happy to answer any questions or jot down any feedback you may have.
Thank you.
And I will stop.
With that?
I'm sorry, go ahead. I wanted to stop. So you had the floor.
Perfect. Okay, so I'll go to the other members of the board. Mr. Ryan, any questions?
No, I just want to reiterate that, you know, the planning board and the zoning board are taking care of us. And we just want to make sure that, you know, that the company provides all the proper information, so that, you know, everything goes smoothly. We don't want any follow-ups along. And, you know, some of my, the planning board and our zoning board do a good job. And we want to make sure it continues that way. And if they're happy, we can be happy. And I think as the town goes on, the scheme is always our best policy around here, so that we don't, you know, there's no need to hide or disguise or talk around anybody or anything in the town of Rockland anymore. And I tell you, and I enjoy the planning board, the zoning board making people people stand up and make sure that everything's done appropriately. That's all I got to say. And welcome to Rockland. I hope you make it. We can use the money and we will welcome you with open arms when the time comes, as long as all the paperwork's in order.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mullin.
Yeah, no, I want to, like, first, I want to first begin by thanking Cresco Labs for the interest in Rockland and wanting to become part of the Rockland. Oh, you know, and wanting to become part of Rockland. You know, I mean, I think, like, I also want, I also want to thank Bob Galvin. His work and leadership at the outset of this in creating, you know, like a standard, oh, you know, host agreement, like the one before us, I think that really makes, like, Rockland attractive. Especially with its appeal, with its leadership, like, and with the location right off route three in terms of the overlay district that we have. So, you know, I mean, I, oh, you know, I'm excited about this. I'm excited about, oh, you know, how, like, frankly, Cresco Labs already has done the research about who Rockland is, who Rockland cares are, you know, like, they already have some semblance of Rockland. So, you know, I think having, you know, and a, oh, you know, oh, and across-the-board uniform agreement, at least until we get going on this thing is helpful. And, you know, and I wish, I wish them luck throughout the rest of the process. Obviously, you know, this is just the beginning. You know, they have to go to the state and then come back to us as well. But like, I wish, I wish them luck in that process.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Penny. So first, I want to say welcome. Excited that you want to be a part of the community. The people in the town voted strongly to support this type of business and to to Bob Galvin and working with everyone to have, set these standard processes in place, I think, benefits everyone, not only the town, but actually the businesses coming in. Also, I think this, this whole scenario where the zoning and the planning are on here shows how I think the town continues to grow. In that the boards are all trying to work together for what's in the best interest of the town. You know, it's an unfortunate, you know, circumstance with what happened with the owner, not the Crescor coming in here, but I applaud the planning board of how they went about it. And just now, the collaboration between the board of selectmen and the planning board and the zoning, I just have seen, you know, a lot of improvements over the last couple of years. And while this is unfortunate, I'm very, very proud and very happy on how this is being worked out and everyone's working together. And welcome aboard.
Thanks very much. Thank you. And Bob and Doug have been fantastic. I second that usually.
Thank you. Yes, so, you know, I think for planning and zoning, I think Chairman Rose, you said it, that, you know, it wasn't this company specifically that cared and that it's a fresh start. There'll be new applications coming from them. I know that, I know that you guys, you guys do a tremendous job, and I know that the way it was presented by the landlord will not reflect your opinion of the applicant themselves. You guys are professionals, you guys have always done a great job. I do think that we should revisit conversation with the landlord of the property and explain to him how, what our expectations are in Rockland. And if the information is presented to us, we pride ourselves in being a business-friendly community and making it as easy as possible for businesses to operate. All we ask in return is that businesses are transparent and honest with us. I don't think that's too much to ask, and we try to move projects through. You know, with that, that's why the planning board voted, you know, four oh the other night without, you know, its pre-approval, you know? So I think if you guys present your application to go before zoning and planning, keep that in mind that that although there, you know, hard feelings versus potentially the landlord, it's not against you guys. But you guys will have to somewhere as a result, you know, go above and beyond and really show them what you guys are looking for. And then anything that they ask you specifically for requirements, as far as studies go or anything like that, you know, they're going to hold you to it because, you know, we're all elected to represent the people of Rockland. And we want to see businesses come here and we want to see them do well. Our responsibility is to the town and its residents first. So as much information as you can provide to these boards and committees, and we welcome you guys with open arms if we can establish that. And who else wants to speak on this matter from Cresco or either boards? Tony Galvin, next steps, approving the host community agreement?
Yes, I think you have a draft agreement that's an acceptable form. I don't know whether Cresco has signed this form yet. And it's more customary for the applicant to sign before the board, but what you could do is vote to endorse, have Cresco return a fully endorsed one to you, and then you could sign it at your convenience at the board.
So Attorney Galvin, just a question, you know, in some of our other agreements, we had a minimum of a hundred thousand and a maximum of five hundred thousand. Were you just going to go with a strict three percent on this agreement?
It's really up to the board to decide. You know, when we began this process, we tried to encourage businesses to come here. Now I think we have three with one already opened, but two more closely in the works, and this would be number four. We initially started with a minimum of a hundred. Everybody was telling us it'd be a hundred anyways. And then to be most attractive, we put a cap, I think at least on one of the original ones, at five hundred thousand dollars. The state regulations allow it to be three percent, whatever that three percent is, and it's really up to the board to decide what they want to do here. It's up to you if you want to cap it. You know, Cresco could tell you how much sales it would take to achieve a three, a five hundred thousand dollar payment based on three percent of gross revenues. They might tell you that they might not reach it. I think they kind of gave you some idea as to what they would do per month. I thought I saw nine hundred thousand per month. I prefer to let them comment on what they project for sales here. But really, it's up to the board whether you want to have the cap, minimum or maximum. And maybe we've reached a point now in Rockland where it makes no sense to have the cap anymore. It should be a straight percent because we're not, we don't seem to have a lack of interest for the town. So it could be a revenue limiting thing for us to maintain that cap.
Hey, members of the board, Larry, any thoughts on that?
Attorney Galvin knows the business and three percent is three percent. If it's a hundred thousand or five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand, you might as well go for what the state allows us to go for. I mean, I'm sort of against the economy that's approached to the states regulating all the prices and all that thing and telling everybody what they have to sell it for. But as long as that's what they're going to do, and we're allowed to take whatever percentage we're allowed to take, then I think we should just stick with that and see where it lies because that's all that's going to happen with the other companies anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin.
Yeah, no, like, I'm definitely open to a Bob. I mean, in your experience and what you're seeing, like, in the market, like, with other towns, what are other towns are doing? Are they, like, are they just actually sticking with a straight three percent? Are they having a ceiling still? Like, are there any trends that you're seeing?
Well, most of the dispensaries have only been open for about a year, so we're really just getting this data now. So even the oldest dispensaries are probably just over a year. I don't know what the sales figures are in other towns. We designed this at the beginning to be really attractive to business by putting that cap there. Are we going to lose somebody because of this? No, we're not. Okay. You know, it's a three percent. And by the way, these agreements are only good for five years. And then at that point, you know, it'll be up to the company and the town to renegotiate an extension if we're able to do that. So there's no magic answer. Some towns have really taken a large bite and asked for a lot more than Rockland has. Rockland is pretty much kept to the minimum, and if somebody protests anything else that we've asked for, we've worked it right out with them immediately. So I really don't have a strong opinion either way. I think it's fair for us to say it's three percent and have no minimum or maximum and just do three percent. I think if you get rid of the maximum, you get rid of the minimum, and I think that's treating everybody extremely fair. That's strictly in accordance with the regulations.
Mr. Penny.
Yeah, like, and just a follow-up to that, Bob, if I could, real quick, I mean, it's a little, oh, you know, it's a, oh, like, it's frankly, it's frankly, it's frankly a little challenging here. You know, in my opinion, to be sitting here talking about this and knowing that essentially we're negotiating against ourselves here, like, with the company on the line. Oh, you know, I would be, oh, you know, I mean, I'm, oh, you know, I'm wholeheartedly supportive of everything you're mentioning. You know, and I think, oh, maybe one way we could proceed forward, oh, you know, like, is giving you and Doug the ability, oh, you know, to go back to, oh, you know, to go back to negotiate, like, with the entity to, oh, to effectively, like, remove that ceiling. I'm a five hundred thousand dollars and, like, giving you ability to, oh, you know, to do that tonight. Like, I just, I mean, I'm just worried about doing anything, like, as a board that would effectively, oh, you know, like, impact that negotiation with the firm right now, if that makes sense, Bob.
Well, the Cresco people are here, so.
No, exactly.
Give you an answer. I mean, if, I think really, you as a board just need to tell Doug and I, are you more comfortable with just the straight three percent or are you more comfortable with the minimum of a hundred and a maximum of five? And if you wanted to hear input from Cresco, I think they could probably give us that input. But my guess is this isn't a deal breaker for Cresco either way. And, you know, should you have a cap if you don't need it? Probably not. I mean, if, let me tell you something. If Cresco is paying a six hundred thousand dollars a year, they're going to gladly pay us that because that means that the sales were incredible.
I agree. Bob, I can make it easy for everybody. It's not a deal breaker for Cresco. We understand where the town is coming from. There's a reason we want to come to Rockland. So we can, we can put that one to rest right now.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jim.
I'll give you enough secrets.
Thank you. So Jim, thank you very much on that. My part on this is, from the get-go, we're doing something right as a town because this is the fourth company that wants to come to Rockland. So there aren't other towns that have this interest. So for whatever the reasons are, whether it's location, whether it's, you know, the demographics, whether it's the host agreements that we have in place, is something that's making it attractive. I think more importantly is, we want to continue to make Rockland attractive for businesses. And whenever you do that, it has to be a partnership. And I think that there's a tendency at times when things are going a little better than what originally was planned, people, a little bit of greed starts to creep in. With that being said, I think we need to be consistent with what we're doing with all four of these businesses. To negotiate a deal with the first one in different than the fourth one in, I think is something that, as a town, could come back to bite us, not just in this business, but as we do other things. Right? I think one of the things we want to try to be is consistent. You know, try to make it easy for the business to do. You know, we're zoning, we're planning, we're the board of selectmen, where, you know, conservation is all working in an effort to do what's right for the town, but also doing things that make it as easy as possible for a business to want to come in and do business here, if that makes sense. So, you know, my only thing is, if we're going to start making changes on on the fourth agreement we have coming in, then I think we need to try to revisit what we've done on the first three. Because I'd hate to put a business in an unfair competitive situation. Right? So they're all kind of doing the same thing. I just, I have a problem if we're now four in because things are going well, that we start to change how we negotiate. That's my only thought on this.
So with that, we have a host.
Would I be able to add one more thing, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay?
Will be able to. Go ahead.
I just dropped my phone, I'm sorry. No, I just want to say, like, I completely agree with what we just mentioned. I wholeheartedly agree with it, you know, and that's why to that point, oh, you know, like, understanding the conversation, oh, you know, that has, oh, you know, that has happened for the last twenty minutes. Oh, you know, I mean, if we could give Doug again, oh, you know, Doug and oh, you know, and attorney Galvin, the ability, oh, you know, to go back and approve, oh, you know, oh, you know, like, a host, like, a host, like, a host, like, a host agreement that has three percent, but also like, allows us as a town to go back and take a more holistic, oh, you know, look at how we're doing this, oh, and how it happens, hopefully across the board. Like, oh, you know, either into the future, you know, like, I do really agree with Rich, and I'd like, oh, you know, the opportunity to, I think, address how we would approach, oh, you know, oh, you know, these issues in a more collective fashion as we go forward. So it's not, oh, you know, every agreement, like, we have the ability to change, you know, different things. And like, I do really, oh, you know, I do really think Rich makes a really good point.
Mike, can I add one thing?
Yes.
I understand where everyone's coming from, but I do want to say, I think, just from a policy perspective, it'd be helpful to know which way, you know, the board would like to go. And just maybe to give like a counter perspective on what Mike Mullin and what Rich were talking about. Again, I completely understand why it makes sense to be consistent. But I think you could also look at it, like, some towns, if they're trying to build an area, they might do some kind of tax increment financing or tax breaks to get businesses going in a certain area. And that doesn't mean that the town is locked into having to do that for every business forever. You know, once you get it up and running, you know, then they tend to be phased out. So personally, from like a public policy perspective, I don't have so much of an issue with having some of the earlier agreements, you know, having a cap, and now that we're kind of up and running, and we do have a lot of interest. I get calls every couple of weeks from other marijuana dispensaries that want to come in. So from a policy perspective, I don't have an issue with removing the minimum and the maximum. But it's a policy call. I'm fine, you know, either way with how you guys want to go. But my concern with just kind of authorizing Bob and I to sort of negotiate it is I do just want to make sure I'm on the same page with you with what your direction is on.
Yeah, so I guess just my opinion, and then I promise I'll shut up. But I mean, I, oh, you know, I would, oh, you know, I would favor having like a three percent of all, oh, you know, of our income, like, our gross, I believe it is, like, with the expectation that be getting on this and moving forward, like, that, oh, you know, that would be our new baseline, if you will.
So I'm, you know, I'm in agreement, I think with everybody, you know, for consistency. But I also think that But I also think that, you know, we entered into some of these host community agreements, you know, several years ago before there was.
Oh, four years ago, three, four years ago.
Yeah, a very long time ago. And we've seen where the market has gone from there and, and maybe, maybe the, the one hundred thousand and the five hundred thousand were, were, uh, it was naive of us to, to go with, with numbers potentially at that point. But I, I do, I do agree with standing, you know, staying consistent. But at some point, at some point, we have to, uh, we have to make that, that change, I think, at some point in order to, you know, change with the market as, as the market shifts. Uh, so again, I, I'll just, I'll leave it open. If, if somebody, if somebody wants to make a motion, uh, then somebody, somebody can make a motion. We have a host community agreement before us right now. Uh, that, that lists a hundred thousand dollar, uh, minimum and a five hundred thousand dollar maximum. If somebody wants to make a motion, we'll approve and we can.
Can I speak for my?
If we want to go the other way. Yeah, go ahead.
At the end of five years, what happens? Do we renegotiate a different deal? Do we get three percent still? Do we get one percent still? Bob, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, Larry, uh, there's no obligation on the part of the the dispensary to agree to a further agreement. It's and look at this, no precedent because no one's been in business for five years yet. Uh, but I think it's likely that there'd be a good faith discussion of an extension and if it was reasonable and there was a demonstrated community impact, I would be shocked if the business wouldn't negotiate something with the, with the town.
Well, well, and, and that, and if that being the case, and we're gonna have to negotiate in the future for a certain percentage. Would it behoove us to be uh, to get the three percent and, and go for the five hundred thousand maximum? Um, if that, if each, if each place reaches that maximum, um, then you know something, at the end of five years, when it's time to go renegotiate, um, you know, they might be a little more amiable toward uh, extending, uh, the contract, if you will, and, and, um, again, uh, you know, I, I, I hate like hell to bleed anybody dry. And I don't think we are, but the state allows us to do it within a certain range and and I think that by setting the one hundred thousand minimum and a five hundred thousand maximum, um, we're demonstrating to the people that come here that, that we're willing to, uh, allow you to keep uh, more of your profits. If you, if you're bringing that much business that we're getting five hundred thousand dollars above and beyond, then you know something, um, when the time comes, I'm sure that they negotiate a, an extension to these deals that keeps this um, little pie in the sky coming. I hate to use the term, but.
You know, look at, uh, I, I don't think that there's anything that legally obligates them to do it, but I definitely think if the town puts a cap there, it's a gesture of good faith. Uh, I think it's really gonna be incumbent on us to kind of, you know, tell them where we're using these funds and if we can continue to demonstrate a need, I think a reasonable business would, would be likely to negotiate something with us. Like, obviously you can't promise them. I don't know what's gonna happen in the industry, whether the market's gonna become oversaturated. I, I just don't know. It's too early to say, but I, I definitely think it's a gesture of good faith of us if we put a cap on it.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I was gonna go back to you. I saw that you, and you needed your microphone a minute ago.
So I agree and it kind of goes back, I, I think from a, from a good faith standpoint. So again, you know, after these five years, this, this part of the deal is not gonna be, um, it, it's not gonna be mandated. But I do think if, to, to Bob's point, we do this in good faith. You know, what are these funds, uh, being useful for the town and for the betterment of the community that this business is investing in? And we keep this at a controllable number. Then in five years, when all four of these come up for renewal, um, and at that point, we, we, we kind of go with this is what it is and why. I, I do think, um, that, um, we would be in a better position long term. Uh, instead of trying to, start it, instead of trying to grab as much as we can right now, look at this more as a, a long-term strategy, as a partnership with these businesses that are coming in. I just, I just think it's a better way to go.
Well said, Rich. So, so how about guys as, as, as a policy? Uh, any, any new business coming through, uh, in the marijuana industry? They get a, uh, a ceiling of five hundred thousand or four, one hundred thousand. And then any renegotiation, uh, after the five years, then we're open to potentially go into three percent of that, but we have an introductory contract, host community agreement with these businesses, uh, consistent with what we've done over the last four years.
I like it. And then in, in five years, when they're up for it, we replay this.
And potentially with.
Who knows what the, uh, what the Marijuana Commission's gonna insist upon in five years anyway? I mean, we don't, they're, they're, they're brand new also and, and they're, they're still painting the rules as they go along. So I mean, five years from now, when these hosted community host agreements come on, you know, they might want to, uh, extend them or do whatever to, uh, help the towns that, that have volunteered, if you will, to accept these places to, um, to fill the public's need, you know? I, I just think that five hundred thousand dollars, if we get five hundred thousand dollars times four, if we have four places, that's, that's two million dollars above and beyond anything we ever expected. And those funds could be earmarked for such things as, um, that approves the town's infrastructure or, or, or whatever, you know, the police department had a, a, a school police officer or things like that. I think that, um, um, you know, I, I, I understand mitigation, but I'm not a bleeder. I don't want to bleed these guys dry. I want to give them an opportunity that if they make more than five hundred thousand dollars worth of tax money that we could have got, you know, good for them because you know what? They're bringing an awful lot of business to Rockland and those people that, uh, stop in those places are also gonna stop in um, and make a, maybe an evening of it and stop at restaurants and, and different stores within the town of Rockland and, and bring us business. And, and they're located in the great spot, uh, near the highway so that um, uh, the major traffic, if you will, comes from the east and the highway rather than then down through, filters down through the side streets anymore than, than normally, uh, goes by, you know? So I, I think we got a lot of things going on and, and again, I'm, uh, I, I'm for the five hundred thousand dollar cap. I think that's, uh, plenty to pay. Uh, to, uh, I hate to use the extortion word, but I, I just don't think that it's, you know, we don't need to bleed people. We're, we're Rockland, we're hardworking people, we're um, good people and, and we want to see everybody get a fair shake and I don't think that the marijuana business should be treated any uh, more shabbily or disproportionately than any other business we have within our town. So. Um, they allow us, uh, we've, we've, we've made it, uh, as a peak, if you will, to the five hundred thousand. I think we should just leave it there, be happy and, um, God knows who else wants to come here also.
So I have one more comment, comment on it. So to Larry's point, um, I, I need to, I, I, I tend to believe that part of the reason why this is the fourth, uh, establishment looking to come here and as Doug said, he's getting more and more requests is because of the, the, the policies that we've set, uh, the precedent that we set previously. You know, we know every town does not have this cap in there. So I, I, I have to believe that this is at least part of the contributing factor of why these businesses want to come here. And I, I'd hate to, you know, if this is number four, do we go to number five? Do we go to number six? You know, if the market demands it, then it's possible. And if this helps attract number five and number six, that now goes from two million to three million, I, I, I just, I would hate at this point to, to move off of what has helped attract now four businesses that are gonna be extremely impactful to the tax base in this town. Uh, more so than any other businesses I can remember in the, you know, in the, in the recent future. I, I mean, in the recent, recent past. And I, I'd hate to make a change now to try to grab a couple more dollars, uh, in, does that, does that scare away more potential, uh, companies coming in here? So I'm on, I'm on board with what Larry was saying.
He got a, he got a motion.
I'll make that motion. That we, we do make the cap five hundred thousand dollars for the five, first five year, for the five years.
I was just gonna say, just to be clear, that's how it's currently drafted. So I think what you're saying is just approve it as drafted.
As, as.
Yep, yes, sir. That'll work.
So Larry, you make your motion is that you approved the host community agreement with Cresco Labs as written?
Yes, that's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All is in favor. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself, that's unanimous.
Jim, remember this in five years.
Yeah. Congratulations. Welcome to Rockland. This is what, uh, this is, I, I, you know, I, I think the thing that this board really prides itself in uh, is, is that transparency and that integrity. Uh, and, and this, I think, speaks to the integrity of our board that, that, uh, although there was an opportunity, uh, for us, you know, we're standing by what we've done in the past. Uh, it, it's not fair at this point to, to change the rules. Maybe in five years, we, we might feel differently, but as, as today stands, uh, you know, consistency is important. You guys filed an application with this town for a reason. And, uh, we'll stand by what, what's been out there before this. So, uh, welcome to Rockland, guys.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Really excited to be a part of it. Thank you very much for the feedback today.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right, next on the agenda, uh, special town meeting, emergency resolution, reduced quorum and tentative date, eleven sixteen twenty. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. Um, I'd like to share my screen for a minute just to go over a couple of things. Um, I know this is a little bit small, but just to recap, this was uh, the email that I received and the notification from the state that we are receiving uh, more chapter seventy and, uh, more unrestricted government aid than we, uh, originally um, projected in our really conservative budget assumptions. Uh, so what this translates to are the following numbers, which I uh, mentioned to you verbally at a prior selectmen's meeting. And I also went over these numbers, uh, with the school department and with the finance committee. So just in, in round numbers, it's a little over a million dollars more, um, than we budgeted and appropriated at our special town meeting. The standard seventy thirty split, uh, which we do both with, you know, new revenue as well as with cuts. You know, is around seven hundred thousand school, three hundred thousand town. Uh, and then speaking with the finance team and, um, you know, we've talked about it briefly at our last meeting, you know, we think it's prudent to set a little bit aside ten percent. Uh, just because there's other issues at hand, you know, we don't know what the final budget is. We don't know what our state assessments are gonna be. Those could go up. We also don't know how all our other revenues are gonna shake out. Maybe some of our other revenue projections are gonna fall short. So we think it's prudent to, to set it, not spend ten percent of this. That leaves us with a net of a little under nine hundred and twelve thousand. So you can see the seventy thirty split, how those numbers shake out. The school number should be six hundred thirty eight thousand. What I talked about with Dr. Cron is we'll just round that up uh, for the schools, because they really have urgent, urgent needs right now to get the schools open and get all the things done they have to do. So to round the school, uh, number up to six hundred fifty thousand. So the difference would be what would be for the town side, uh, a little under two hundred sixty, two thousand dollars. So the, uh, the issue at hand is, you know, we had to make a lot of tough cuts. You know, now we have, um, this funding committed from the state, so we do think it's, uh, urgent to have a, have a special town meeting so we can supplement our appropriation so that especially so the schools will be able to access these funds and do all the things that they have to do to be able to open up school and also on the town side, that's so that we can restore some of our cuts. I just want to go back a couple of pages just to highlight from our town charter, um, here in yellow. You have the power to order special town meetings. Uh, but to do that, you first have to adopt by a majority vote of the board a resolution clearly stating the emergency nature. And the warrant has to be open for at least seven days. So my recommendation is, you know, the financial emergency associated with COVID nineteen, I believe, would necessitate a special town meeting so we can restore. Won't be able to restore all our cuts, but we'll be able to restore, um, a lot of the cuts. So that, I think, would be the resolution. And then the last thing I just wanted to highlight again, you know, you did this for our annual special town meeting last June. This is just a highlighted portion of the state law that was passed uh, that allowed towns, uh, to reduce their quorum for those towns that do have quorums like Rockland does to go down to ten percent. I personally think it was critical that you took that action and that we did that. Uh, we still had a good turnout considering the fact that we were in the middle of the pandemic, you know, it was less than the regular one fifty. Um, but this gives us the flexibility to, to have a town meeting, um, with less than our standard, uh, quorum. The vote you took before was just for that specific town meeting on June twenty second, so you'd need to take that vote again. Um, you don't need to vote that tonight because there's very strict advertising requirements in that state law for how we have to advertise the selectmen's meeting where you even consider to vote to reduce the quorum. So I'm not asking you to do that tonight. My main purpose tonight was just to talk about what I think is the need for a special town meeting. If you guys agree, um, just vote that emergency resolution so that's out there. Um, at a, if, then if we agree, if you agree, it would be at a future meeting, probably the October sixth meeting is where we'd do all the advertising for you to be able to vote to reduce the quorum if you want to. And then lastly, as far as the date goes, I spoke to staff here and in particular with the town clerk's office, because they're involved in running town meetings. Uh, for them, given the big election that's happening, they're busy right before the federal election day and they're busy immediately following it. We obviously don't want to conflict with Thanksgiving, so we're tentatively thinking of a, a town meeting on Monday, November sixteenth. And I keep looking to my left, by the way, because that's where my calendar is, people are wondering. Um, you don't have to vote that tonight. I'm just kind of throwing that out there, see if it get any reaction from you guys and, you know, we can focus on that more later. So I hope that all makes sense.
Makes sense. Anybody have any questions? Larry?
Nope, I'm good. It makes sense to me.
Mike? You're on mute. You're muted.
I know, sorry, Bob. Uh, yeah, like it makes absolute sense to me. I can duck for planning purposes. Uh, like if it's easier to vote, oh, you know, that we vote this evening to set um, a special time meeting for the sixteenth of November. Uh, you know, I mean, I think that's, uh, like extremely prudent so we can, uh, like actually, oh, I haven't be able to provide to departments, uh, you know, with the funding that they need to finish out the fiscal year. So, uh, you know, if you need a motion, I'm happy to make a motion. Uh, oh, you know, that we do, uh, that we do declare such a, oh, you know, I'm, oh, an emergency for a special time meeting, as you mentioned. Um, and, um, and that time meeting be, the special time meeting be held, um, uh, like on November sixteenth.
Okay, so, so, so Mike made a motion, but I want to go to Rich first to see if he has any comments and then an opportunity to second that motion.
Uh, no specific comments other than, um, you know, great job by, by the team and the, and the group getting out ahead of this and, and, uh, you know, two and a half months out, uh, already pre-planning for this. So, um, may hats off to the group.
Okay, so I, I do have a motion on the floor. Anybody want a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All goes in favor. Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself, that's unanimous. Doug, town meeting is November sixteenth.
Seven o'clock, seven P M.
Great. Thank you very much. That, that's helpful. And obviously we'll have a lot more info to come. I think we'll obviously plan on doing it indoors again. Obviously need to confirm with the high school that, that the room is available. I'm, I'm sure we'll be able to figure that out, but, uh, you know, we were successfully able to do it the first time with a lot of good planning for overflow spaces, so I'm confident we'll be able to do it again.
Okay, next on the agenda, other new business not reasonably anticipated. Uh, next on the agenda, old business FY21 revised budget.
Yep, so the only thing I, and this really just dovetails in with the discussion we just had, um, and let me just share my screen quickly again. There with me, here we go. I just wanted to share, and I know this is pretty small, so I'll zoom in a little bit. This was the budget document when we had to redo the original budget to go to the COVID budget. And it's funny, now I, I thought I was done with that and now we're redoing it yet again. But as you remember, you know, we had to make a lot of cuts and these outlined, you know, additional sort of one-time sources of revenue, uh, that we had to take, uh, a, a summary of the cuts that the school department had to take and then a department by department listing of all the cuts that all of our, uh, general government departments had to make. So what I've done is for a process, I've reached out to all our department heads and I've asked every department head that had any cuts, uh, as shown on here to prioritize, if they could get anything restored, what would their priorities be, you know, ranking from most important to least important? So I wanted to make sure to get input from staff. And what I'm gonna, uh, come back to is a, a total that, you know, will not exceed that 262,000 dollar number, uh, you know, that we spoke about before. And I'll outline in detail for each department exactly what I'm looking at restoring and not restoring. So I'm just, uh, just wanted to kinda highlight the process. I don't have any answers yet. We're working on it, but that's, that's how I'm approaching it, if that works for you guys.
All right, next on the agenda, other old business not reasonably anticipated? Nothing. And number six, town administrator's report and correspondence.
Thanks, Mike. I do, uh, have a number of things, uh, to talk about tonight. Uh, the first is as far as COVID cases in town goes, uh, we currently have 11 active cases in our community, uh, none of which are, are at our two nursing homes. Um, so the numbers are starting to, um, to trend back up, uh, a little bit. Uh, however, I would also, um, let the public know that the actions that everyone's taking in our community to keep us safe, uh, is having a good impact because, you know, we're not one of the, one of the red communities, we're not one of the spike communities. So that's, that's a good thing, but, uh, they are going up a little bit. Uh, some older projects, uh, we did just publish, uh, the invitations for bid, the IFB, uh, to do the McKinley School Sprinkler Project to finish that project, the third floor in the attic, uh, which town meeting voted, uh, to fund from CPA monies, uh, at our annual town meeting in June. Um, so we published that invitations for bid. It's, it's advertised in all the required places. Uh, we're gonna have a site visit, um, for interested bidders on September 9th. And bids are gonna be due on September 16th. Um, so if all goes according to plan, you know, uh, well before the end of this calendar year, that should be 100% done and safe, and then the rest of the building can, can finally be occupied safely again. Uh, the next item, I wanted to thank the town clerk's office. You know, they did a really good job with early voting. Um, all these early voting requirements mandates that are put out by the state are really tough for small towns like Rockland, but, you know, with small staff. And then you add on top of that the, uh, the layer, the extra layer of being in the middle of a pandemic. Um, so it's very difficult, but, you know, Donna and Liza and Christine and the clerk's office did an excellent job. They set it up in the, the ground floor level of town hall with one way in, uh, people screened, make sure masks, et cetera, sanitation stations, one way into the large conference room voting, one way out, out a different door. It all worked very efficiently, very safely. Um, and, uh, while everything went well, we are gonna have the entire town hall building sanitized by a professional company, just since we did have such a high volume of people flowing through the building, through the halls, conference room, restrooms, et cetera. Um, so that sanitation is actually gonna happen this Friday, the 4th. Uh, they will have to do actually two weeks of early voting again, uh, before the, uh, before the November elections. So we'll be going through this one more time. I also, you know, kinda piggybacking on that, I just, I wanted to thank our staff in general, cause, you know, a lot of folks have been going above and beyond in a variety of different departments. And I'm, I'm always hesitant to wanna call anybody out or, or praise any individual one, cause others might feel that, you know, why, why weren't they recognized? But just kind of as one example, you know, we have a custodian at our senior center, Brian O'Neil, who does a great job at the senior center. Senior center's been closed. There's been, you know, uh, less work for him to do over there. Uh, but with everything happening here at town hall, we've had some extra cleaning needs that we've had. So we redeployed him over here. Done, done an excellent job with this. And we had some other little things like painting, stuff like that. He was able to do an excellent job for us and, and save the town a lot of money by not having to pay, uh, prevailing wages for a private painting company to come in. So just little things like that, like our custodian Brian, I just appreciate everything our staff does. So I wanted to make sure to say that. One, uh, really good piece of financial news is we've been working very closely, uh, with our Plymouth County Commissioners and with the Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, uh, on all our CARES Act, uh, reimbursement requests. And in particular, we've, we've really been leaning on them to release, uh, the next phase of funding, which they've been holding aside, you know, kind of patiently waiting to see what Congress might do and, and Washington to see if they're gonna change allowable uses of the funding. Um, but based on our urging of them to, you know, release some of these extra funds now, because we need the money now, especially again for our schools to open. Uh, they just released the phase four allocations and Rockland is slated to receive an additional 787,000 dollars of CARES Act, uh, reimbursement. So again, this is reimbursement, so we have to incur the actual expenses and then put in for it. But this is really welcome news, uh, especially the, the, the first call and email I made, once I got that was, was right to the school department for Dr. Kron and Jane. So they were aware, so they could start preparing their submissions, uh, cause again, they'll, they'll get, uh, 70% of that, 787,000. So that's uh, really welcome news. Following up on some, uh, older items, I've been working with town treasurer, John Ellard, on getting the auction ready for 320 Concord Street. The board voted to authorize that at a previous executive session. Uh, we are in the process of finalizing our selection of the professional auctioneer that we're gonna hire. Uh, that auctioneer will be paid, uh, by a premium that will be paid by the buyer, so that won't be coming from taxpayers. Um, and it's a, obviously a tricky property. Everybody knows the history of it, but, uh, you know, we feel confident that we'll have a good plan with an excellent professional auctioneer to, to move that property, uh, and get that structure taken down as the court has ordered. Um, we're likely gonna wait on auctioning the 1088 Union Street property for now. We can get into that more at another meeting. Um, but the urgency really is at the Concord Street property. So we, you know, while there's uh, other issues that we're evaluating on Union Street, we don't want that to hold up the other auction. We can always do the Union Street one and plus any others at a later date. Uh, I wanted to let the board know that last Friday, uh, the town submitted a 1.9 million dollar Mass Works grant application. Uh, the board authorized, uh, you to submit uh, this application at a previous meeting. Uh, and just to be clear about what the final application entailed, it includes adding an additional lane of traffic going southbound on Hingham Street from Commerce Road all the way to Reservoir Park Drive. So as you all know, it's two lanes for a little bit, and then it kind of awkwardly merges into one before that right-hand turning lane toward Reservoir Park pops up at the end. And, and that, that merge tends to choke traffic and back things up. So the, the application is for funding to finalize the design and to construct two lanes going that whole, uh, southbound stretch plus an ADA sidewalk. Uh, so I really wanna thank A W Perry, uh, uh, that, that developer, um, funded the engineering firm that we use, McMahon Associates, to help with the design and help with the actual application. Uh, as well as assistant town administrator, Jen Constable, and highway superintendent, Dave Taylor. It was a real team effort. Um, but we got it in on time. It's received and, you know, we're, we're, uh, hopeful, uh, that this will be funded, cause we do think regardless of any new commercial developments that happen down the road, that this is a really needed, uh, infrastructure improvement, um, that will help right now. And then just sticking with the grant theme for a few minutes, um, I just wanna say, I don't know any other way to say it other than just the town has been crushing it lately as it relates to grants. We've had a lot of good success and I just wanted to highlight a few of them right off the top of my head that I was just recently notified about. Uh, one is we got yet another green communities grant. Uh, this one's for over almost 53,000 dollars for high efficiency LED lighting at the sewer department, at the sewer plant. That's gonna be a huge help to them. It's gonna save them literally thousands of dollars every year forever going forward. Uh, the fire department got a number of grants. I think we, we may have spoken about these at a previous meeting. Hostile event response training for 70,000 dollars, a brush force fire truck for 220,000 dollars and uh, COVID-19 PPE for 70,000 dollars. And when I was thanking the fire chief for, for doing such a great job with all these, he immediately wanted to need to publicly thank firefighter Mark Ashri, who's, who's the grant writer in the department and does an outstanding job. And then sticking with the public safety theme, I can now publicly say, cause we got it in writing, uh, that we did receive a state 911 regional dispatch grant for 309,000 dollars. So this is enormous. So this is going to completely cover our entire regional dispatch costs for FY20. So I can't stress enough what a, what a fantastic coup this is for us to have achieved this. Again, Chief Duffy deserves a ton of credit. I know he was working with Holdbrook, uh, where we do our regional dispatch, uh, to be able to work with them to get that. Um, but it's a multi-year grant and ultimately if we're, if we continue to be successful, we'll have three more years, uh, of 100% coverage of our regional dispatch costs. Year four goes down to 50% and year five it goes down to 25%. Uh, but this is really enormous. So as we're continuing to look at revising the budget, you know, Biz and I have a lot of different thoughts. You know, we always wanna be conservative, you know, make sure that we're not overspending. We're, we're very nervous about a lot of our revenue assumptions, so we, we're gonna look at how, how we handle this. We may end up just sort of leaving this alone to, to be conservative, uh, but it is, um, absolutely fantastic news. And then lastly, on the public safety grant front, the, uh, police chief, Llewellyn, uh, received a 25,000 dollar, uh, grant for COVID-19 PPE, um, equipment. So we've really done an excellent job with grants and, um, in particular, it's, it's all the various staff, you know, it's, it's sort of a decentralized approach we have. It's not one person that does it all. It's all the different departments are continually looking at grants and I wanna thank all of them for that. Two other quick ones. Um, one is regarding our charter, uh, update, the town meeting voted and our charter review committee put together. Uh, so the senate, you know, we, we intentionally drafted them as separate articles, just in case the general court, the, the state legislature wanted to pass some, but not others. But in, in working with Senator Keenan and Rep. Coast's office, and then ultimately with Senate Council's office, they're comfortable with all of them. Um, they've, uh, merged them into one single bill, uh, and it's already been filed. So we're, I'm very pleased that we got that in, um, very quickly. Oftentimes you have to wait a whole year before they even get introduced. Um, so it's referred to the appropriate committee and it's gonna work its way through. And lastly, I just wanted to highlight to the public, uh, right now it is September 1st. Town hall is now open until 8:00 PM on the first and third Tuesday of each month. So tonight was the first month. Again, due to COVID-19, all access to our building, uh, will continue to be by appointment only. So if anybody needs any in-person access to any town hall departments, give us a call at town hall. Um, and if you're not able to come during regular business hours, hopefully these, uh, late night hours, the first and third Tuesday of each night will be helpful. So that's all I have. I'm sorry that was a little bit long, but I thought you'd be interested in all that tonight.
Thank you, Doug. Good stuff. Uh, next on the agenda, soft news comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily follow the views of Boris Rockman, uh, the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Penny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, well, I was disappointed, uh, a few weeks ago that, uh, the acknowledgement for, uh, for our first responders was, uh, was gonna be canceled or was canceled. Uh, I'm, I'm extremely excited that, uh, we've, we brought that back and, and we're gonna be able to recognize them, uh, not only this year, but going forward. I do think, um, with everything going on, um, those two professions, uh, have really taken a hit. Um, and, and it's unfortunate, uh, I think in so many aspects of life, the majority of people are good, uh, but all it takes is a couple of bad apples. Uh, and in this case, um, you know, it, it's taken on a life of its own. Uh, and I, I think it's unfair for, you know, the vast majority in this profession who, you know, people truly, I think, um, you know, uh, just take for granted what they do every day. Uh, they literally put their lives on the line, uh, to take care of us, you know, um, whether it's fighting a fire, whether it's, you know, uh, going after a criminal, uh, whatever it is. Um, and it's just an unfortunate, uh, circumstance that in every profession, uh, there are some bad apples, you know, and it's, it's in everything that we do. Um, but it's just unfortunate at this point. It's, it's taken on the life that it, that it has. And you know, I, I, I personally know, uh, a lot of our, uh, police officers and firefighters. Uh, you know, like Mullen mentioned it earlier, uh, they are our friends, they are our neighbors. Uh, and they are a, a group of men and women who truly do, um, an excellent job and, and truly have the, um, the best interest of the townspeople. So, um, I'm looking forward to, to those two days, to, uh, to honor those. Also, uh, good luck to, uh, the school system, uh, to the teachers, um, to the staff, to the kids. Um, I, I hope, um, and pray that, uh, things go very, very well, um, and, um, that they can get through the school year without, uh, without too many hiccups.
Thank you, Rich. Mr. Mullen? On mute?
Sorry, I don't have anything tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
Uh, I just wanna say thank you to, uh, Doug and Jen and Biz and Stacy. Uh, anchoring the very fine town of Rockland employment force who have been nothing short of outstanding during this whole COVID thing, uh, putting up with all the different restrictions that come, come with the job. Um, we have some great elected officials in our town that are standing up and, uh, being counted during all this time. And, um, if you see any of them on the street, you make sure you stop them and say thank you for all the job you're doing, because everybody in, in the town hall is working really hard and together, which is a great thing. And, uh, you know, I've been around a long time and I hate to use the old, old guys talk, but I have been around a long time and, and seeing everybody work, uh, together with the boards and the different departments is a really, really fine thing. And and I just wanna thank the Board of Selectmen and, and all the different elected officials for thinking of Rockland first and, um, their own desires second. And, uh, thank you again. That's all I get to say.
Thank you, Larry. Um, and like Mike Mullen, I, um, I, I don't really have anything to say tonight outside of, uh, you know, take the opportunity to, uh, show some appreciation to the Rockland Police Department on, uh, September 5th. I'm not sure that there's anything necessarily planned, but, you know, residents have always done a nice job of, of going out of their way and, and just, just go, just say thank you. Just say thank you for, for the sacrifices that they make and, and professionalism with, with, which they handle themselves and conduct their business on a day-to-day basis. Uh, with, with the thought of protecting, uh, the residents of Rockland in mind. Uh, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and go into executive session for purpose number three. Litigation strategy, uh, town of Rockland versus, uh, Chaka.
Don't move. Not to compete.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second. All goes in favor. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself. Good night. Thank you.